Thirty-two will call the meeting door. Mr. Mayor, say the pledge of allegiance.
Recording in progress.
I'd like to...
...unto the truth of the law, the United States of America and into a republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, well, to Mr. Mayor, would you like to amend the agenda? You would. I would. I would like to add 3B for LaSalle Street environmental study. That's a motion?
That's a motion.
Second? Second by Mike. Not always good with that. Fine. So, to amend the agenda to add LaSalle Street environmental evaluation. Thank you, Chad. All right, moving on to public comment. Public comment.
Do we have to vote?
Oh, we should vote on this?
We should.
We can do that. All those in favor of the motion that Chad made and Mike seconded, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing done, the agenda is amended. So now, I've been pushing the public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment on non-agenda items? And on other issues within our purview? So, we have a few people on Zoom. Jump in if you have something you'd like to share. Everyone's on mute right now.
I believe they're all here for the public hearing later.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay. Anyone in the audience? Public comment?
Let's just start with me.
Okay, let's move on to item number four. 3B. 3B. I sort of voted against that. All right, now we're moving on to item number 3B, which is the LaSalle environmental evaluation. That's for you, Don.
We need to do a little bit more site investigation on the Lake Street housing project that Grant Butterfield is the president of. So, we've agreed to split the cost of the additional investigation 50/50, Mr. Butterfield. So, the cost of the city is $16,075, and I look for permission to approve the LaSalle Street environmental contract.
Zoom. The motion is there, second?
Second.
Second by Chad, second by Mike. Don, can you give us the public a quick overview as to how many units that would consist of?
Sure. It's about 70 units of what are called tax credit housing units. So, this is affordable housing, roughly 60% of median income, area median income. So, and all seven units are going to be subsidized. It reflects the market study that the developer did that shows that that's about the level of demand for folks in that income level. And so, it's going to be a good-looking building, and we'll do a lot to transform the aesthetics, I think, of the site and surround here.
In your opinion, it'll be a good-looking building.
Well, I, yeah, well, no, the DRV makes that decision. They have a permit.
All right. We have an overview of what we're referring to for the environmental analysis. Anyone that there's a cost to us, anyone, for those on board with this, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing done, the motion passes. And that was item 3B.
Yes, sir.
Yes, it was. All right, let's move on to Chad with their approval. I'd like to move on to number four.
You were...
Moving on.
You're in, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. First reading, going amendments regarding district change, and that will be Chip, who will, I think, will be sitting quite a bit tonight.
Yeah.
Chip, thanks for joining us.
Glad to be here. Planning Commission's actually been working on an idea for three years and been doing outreach with residents in the areas over the past three months. But it started with looking at that corridor of North Main Street between Branister Street and Brandon's, where it's houses and estates before it gets to the commercial strip out where Brandon's is and Maurice's and Lester's, I think.
Lester's.
Lester's.
Go-Go.
Go-Go. Am I dating myself? Wait, Maurice's and what's the other one?
Maurice's.
Go-Go.
Go-Go Gas.
Go-Go Gas.
Jolly.
Yeah.
Which was formerly a Lester's.
I think there's a third one that's stuck in the middle there. Anyway. The Planning Commission, I think, that people recognize, it's a really great gateway drive into the city, and the houses accommodate residential uses and professional uses like offices and that sort of thing. But they're currently in the B2 district, which allows a lot of other uses, gas stations and retail stores. And it started with a conversation the Planning Commission had about, well, could we change the uses in that area of the city so the type of uses that are allowed would only be the ones that we think are more compatible with house-type structures like what we have up there now? So, the Planning Commission envisioned what they called the residential-professional district, where they took the B2 business to the district and they just basically removed all the uses that they don't think are compatible with the current, the way that drive looks now. Kept all the dimensional standards the same. And as they were looking, they also realized, well, we should go down that first block of Lower Newton as well, because that's also, that first block, it's all residential, currently B2, but it could be this residential-professional district as well. Best Court is technically B2, and so, there's a proposal here to take the Best Court neighborhood and zone it as residential 7500, which is the residential district that matches the current densities of Best Court. And then, and this is where they ended, but their gaze was widening, and this is where it ended. There's a section of Federal Street on the west side between Aldis and Lower Newton. It's mostly houses, but also includes Good Stuff and Georgia Split Tires. And it's currently zoned service industrial, but that makes all of those homes grandfather because technically you can't have a residential use in service industrial. So, we ended it at that side of Federal Street in that area should also be B2, just like all the properties right across the street, right across the street from that very section. So, they put together the proposal that you have before you today, and we flyer'd all the neighborhoods, North Main, Best Court, Lower Newton, that second Federal Street, invited folks to come to Planning Commission meetings, you know, starting in August. And we had some folks, we had some folks show up. We had a lot of folks come to a walk of North Main Street that happened in August. And people asked questions, but generally, everyone who came out and gave input understood what we were trying to do. There were no objections. There were some questions about how it might affect taxes or other things. We got one person who said, "I might want to do a specific type of thing in my property. Can we make sure that's allowed in the zone?" So that's why you see there's a small craft production and retail shop that's being created, which is basically just if you make something at home and you want to sell it at a different location, like if you make Dreamcatchers and you want to sell it, you'd be able to, you know, to do that. It's not going to be a full-on retail, but it's limited to a small operation that makes something and then wants to sell it. Planning Commission also put in a change to give better guidance on what to do when you have a deep lot, where the front part of the lot is in one district, in the backyard, and all of your neighbors in the backyard are in a different district. Our current rule allows your front yard district to extend on your entire property, and that's actually, that's led to some problems before, where you have a commercial front end, you're allowed to extend to the rest of your property, and all your neighbors back there, including the neighbors you back up into, saying a residential zone, we're like, well, what's, how's this encroaching all the way up here? So, we created a boundary rule that allows you, that gives the DRV and the zoning administrator guidance on what to allow in the front and what to allow in the backyard if there are different zones. And then there are some other housekeeping changes proposed about making sure that this new residential-professional district's mentioned in all the places where we talk about specific standards for districts, and basically just put it everywhere where the B2 district is already mentioned. If you go through the packet, you'll see a map at the end which outlines the areas that are proposed to be changed. So you see the red outlined area on Federal Street? That area's proposed to go from service industrial to business two. And you see Best Court has a purple outline around it, so that's where it's proposed to be changed from business two to residential. And then the large green outline on Lower Newton and North Main is the area that's proposed to be this new residential-professional district.
Excuse me, Chip?
Yes.
I noticed on the first page, number two, you've got rezoning the east side of Federal Street. That would be the west.
That should be the west side.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, that's incorrect in the memo, but it's correct in the, on the front page of the packet.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
So, looking at this, when I see the difference in the lots from being this new district and being residential district as well, where you see the pink and the yellow, one lot being both, does that set ourselves up, or does that set those properties up for Hefflin Lane type of development?
Not so much, because there is a rule inserted that if you're going to be extending principal buildings into that back lot, you can't go any farther than the average of neighboring lots. So you wouldn't be able to do something that extends further than the other neighbors do.
I'm wondering how Hefflin Lane got in there then?
Because Hefflin Lane went under the rule, the way it's currently written, that if your whole frontage is one district, that extends to the entire lot. And we didn't have the rule for rear setbacks at the time that sort of put that average limit on how far back you could go.
The accessory dwelling would affect those, right?
The accessory dwelling would have to, it would be considered the principal use because it's residential, so it would have to follow the same rules that other principal structures would follow.
You might have mentioned it, Chip. What brought about the discussion?
I think we were talking about, we were talking about gateway design review, or we were talking about, you know, approaches to the city, and someone mentioned North Main, and someone else talked about, you know, what zone does that in? And then we looked at everything else that's allowed in the B2. They said one of the ways to preserve it is to just limit the uses to things that would fit, you know, the types of uses that would fit in a house-type structure. It's still a wide range of uses, all kinds of residential uses, offices, personal services, even...
Well, let's see, we got a chiropractor up there.
Yeah.
We had an attorney on the other side of the street, a dentist.
A accountant.
Yep.
That would also be allowed.
Yeah.
But things like the retail stores and the gas stations, those things have been removed.
Yeah. And which I agree with those folks who live there, that I wouldn't want those next to me either.
Right.
You know, there's a place for those, but that's not it. And now that I'm sure that that type of stuff is not going to happen, where are you going to have a lot that's, someone's going to come in and say, "Well, you know, I've got my dentist's office out front here, but I've got a lot large enough where I can have a six blocks behind it, and that's all I want to do." And we're saying, "Well, we are in the residential back there on that side of the lot, so that's allowed, so I guess we're going to allow it." That's the only problem I'm seeing.
Well, the map had a cleaner look if you followed the powerful lines, but if you would feel more, I mean, and other members of the council would feel more comfortable if you kind of followed the same line that the B2 district does, that the planning district does.
Yeah.
Then that new boundary rule, that's also proposed as part of this, would kick in. Anyone wanted to do something in that backyard, they would now be limited to what you can do in the residential zone that's represented by the yellow.
Right. Which would mean that...
Which would be less. You'd be able to do some things, but in that, in that residential 9500 zone, for instance, you can't do a triplex.
Yeah. Is, are there conditional use requirements gone away?
No, most things would have to go before conditional use. Anything more than a duplex.
Would, would, putting it the way that it's presented now by the Planning Commission and then adding that any further development other than what is existing at the time of the enactment of this regulation is going to be under some type of conditional use criteria.
It would be.
You know, ironed out over more than that. I know I'm saying it wrong.
It would be either way. The way it's proposed right now, if you wanted to do, actually, it might be anything more than a single family home that's conditional use. Or if you wanted to bring the green line down so that it mostly follows the pink, then development back there would have to follow the same rules as the yellow district, in which case, anything other than a single family home is conditional use.
On a single lot?
Right. So, this, this rule gives you guidance on things like, you've got a lot, and you've got the rule of two districts. So if you have a use that's proposed, one zoning district allows it as permitted, the other allows it as conditional use, and the most restrictive shall apply, and it should go before the DRV's conditional use.
Okay. This is all me, almost, right link now. Up to the Federal Street, yeah? So, yeah, I mean, because everything north of Congress is...
What, would this get replicated on the south and the main street?
They, not, they're thinking about it, but it, South Maine has some of these areas that are house-type, but then it, it has more areas where it's broken up by the commercial. So, the nice thing about this area of North Main Street is we do not grandfather anyone by making this change. If you wanted to do South Maine and we wanted it to be all contiguous, we might be grandfathering a couple of commercial uses that get caught up. So, the Planning Commission's probably going to look at South Main Street and see if, do we want to do pockets of residential professional and skip the commercial lots? Or do we want to, it just, it's more of a, they should be more careful about it.
I mean, I don't think there's anything there, does anyone think that, there's anything operating now on North Main Street that is unpalatable to any of us? I think it's, it's running pretty nice. I'm just worried about the advantages that this gives to somebody else, but I think the residents came up and...
This, yeah.
...the clearance of the Planning Commission. Ken ran a good operation, that all the commercial operations out there were running nice, and there wasn't a traffic nightmare.
A-12 still out there, right? A-12?
A-12, there's at least one lawyer's office, there's a chiropractor, there was a dentist's office, and there could be.
Yeah, that's what we initially envisioned when we made the B2 transition district.
Right.
Initially, but we didn't want, and I don't know why we didn't catch this back then, we didn't want those other items to be able to encroach on those houses later on. So, I think this is a good proposition, as long as they're protected from those couple of things I outlined, really. And I think they are.
So this is just the first reading. If you've got any other questions or comments? Consensus is, move forward. And we'll see you next month on that, I guess. Thank you.
Oh, Chip, one more thing on that.
Yeah.
We made that area of Federal Street service industrial, and that's one of the reasons Good Stuff was allowed to be there, because we zoned them out of everywhere other than service industrial. How's this going to affect that?
When I looked at the definition of adult establishment, it really is about, it's about, it's about nudity, and it's about, and it's, it's really about strip clubs. So, Good Stuff is a retail operation that sells some racy items, but it's not bad.
Right.
So I think it fits in as retail. So it would be allowed in the B2 if this area switched over to B2, the way adult establishment is defined right now in the rest.
Okay.
If the worldwide headquarters doesn't impact that.
We're good on that?
I wouldn't know if it hadn't been there in a while.
Okay.
Not since Lester was there, I don't think.
So we're moving on to the final hearing for the BCDP grants?
We have three BCDP grants that are winding down, and they all need a final hearing before BCDP will let them close things up. So I thought maybe we could just go through one by one. And we have some folks who are joining us tonight, who are able to answer any questions. I figure we could just go with the paragraphs that are in the memo for each one and see if there's any public comment.
Before you do that, Chip, why don't we just do introductions for those with us? If you want to.
Let's start with Julie.
Hi, thank you for having us here tonight. My name's Julie Curtin. I'm the Director of Home Ownership for Champlain Housing Trust.
And Becca?
I'm Beth Power. I'm the Loan Fund Manager for Champlain.
And Heather?
I'm Heather Grosso. I am the Business Manager and Owner of Almond Blossom Schoolhouse.
Thank you for joining us. Chip, all yours.
First one, $1,134,500 went toward Champlain Housing Trust to continue the home repair loan program, which provides affordable home repair financing options for eligible homeowners and landowners in Chittenden, Franklin, and Grand Isle Counties. The project funded at least 63 residential rehab projects and provided counseling for at least 533 low-to-moderate-income households, and that was pulled from their last progress report, so it might have been more by the time this round grant was done. The grant funds also paid for program management and administration so that CHD could run the program. Any questions about that one?
So you're telling us what has happened?
Yeah. So we basically talked about what they did with the money and opened it for public comment, and then that's it. That's the final of the hearing.
How many of the 63 residential rehab projects run the city?
I believe there was seven, and we have three progress right now.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, other questions on the grant number one? Okay, we'll move to grant number two, Champlain Housing.
$490,000, $692,000 went to Champlain Housing Trust for a housing stabilization program to provide eligible low-to-moderate-income households in the three-county area that had been affected by COVID-19 with housing-related financial counseling and emergency payments for housing-related costs in the form of mortgage, mental, and utility payment assistance. So this was one of the COVID response programs that was funneled through a DCDP. Over the course of the grant, CHD counseled at least 281 households, at least 21, sorry, 22 households were able to seek emergency payments. Grant funds were also used to support program and activities in grant administration to market the program and process the emergency payments.
Question?
Yes.
I think you've said before that we operate these programs even though they serve Chittenden and other counties because we have the facilities, but we're the nexus for it because we're capable of doing that.
Right.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And we get the administration or some management, not management money, but we have the grant administration money coming to us because we handle the legal aspects of it, is that right?
We budget, quite frankly, we put so little time into it that it's more burdensome to have to make that request than to just do it. So the city does budget some funds every year for grant admin like this, and we kind of do it for the benefit that someone, some municipality has to do it, and it does benefit the city residences that get into the program, along with all the others in the three-county area. So sometimes for the larger BCDP projects, we have tracked our hours and requested reimbursement, but for this one, it was hardly any of my time, so.
Okay, I guess meant in general, so.
Right, yeah. We make sure, we make sure we're whole when we need to be made whole.
I guess I would just ask the same question. Do we know how many city entities are impacted?
Yeah, there are about 20 households that received financial counseling, and then one household that received actual direct service payments in addition to the completed one.
Thank you. We'll move on. Any other questions on that? Hearing done, we'll move on to grant number three, which was the $500,000 for renovation and expansion of Almond Blossom Schoolhouse.
$0.5 million for renovation and expansion of the Almond Blossom Schoolhouse childcare and preschool facility, which included property acquisition, building renovation, and site work to accommodate the expansion of services from a 30-child capacity up to a 57-child capacity. The property is located in a historic building at 233 to 235 Lake Street, so this grant allowed Almond Blossom to purchase the building, renovate it, and expand how many children they were able to serve on the property.
Heather, where were your employees parking before you put the parking lot in the back?
We started off parking at Forty Angels Church for a while, and then we were using street parking during most of the construction. Now we're very glad of the parking lot.
Is drop-off, is the majority of the kids still do the drop-off at the front, or are they going to the parking lot in the back to do drop-off?
I'd say it's about split, where the classrooms are for different ages. It kind of spreads out where families want to come into the building, which is actually a huge benefit for us.
Thank you.
Usually they park in their parking lot because we have all of, the staff takes up most of the parking spaces, but there's enough room for families to kind of pull in and out, you know, they're only there for a couple minutes.
All right, thank you. Are you at capacity, Heather?
Yes, there's always, you know, a spot here or there as families transition or age up, but right now we are fully staffed and fully booked.
I'd just like to acknowledge, as I've gone by over the last year, the improvements you made have really improved that corner, I think. It looks good. I'm guessing there's more on the way.
Your turn.
Was this an outright grant to Heather or the owners of Almond Blossom? And if so, are there any conditions that they have to keep up the daycare for a period of time or anything like that?
Yes, the conditions are that it has to, it's assumed... Yes, the conditions are that it has to, it's assumed because of the census tract that it's in that it's benefiting low to moderate income children and families. But Heather will have to collect some income information. I forget how, I forget for how long, but for a period of time. And as with any BCDP grants, if she wanted to sell the building quickly, she might have to talk to BCDP about reversing them for some of the, what they put into it.
Any other questions or comments? Ladies, anything to share? On your end?
I would like to say that, you know, thank you guys for your continued support. I know that this project's been going on for a long time, and I'm very thankful for everything that you guys have done to, to help. You know, it is in a low-income area, and I think that the community really appreciates having us there. So thank you.
So far.
Similarly, just would like to express our appreciation to the city of San Alex for sponsoring these, these grants. It helps a lot of people in need that wouldn't have resources otherwise. So thank you very much.
Do you expect another one coming down the bike here at some point?
Is that question addressed to Champlain Housing?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we have, we have received a grant award from BCDP for a 2023 grant partnered through the city of San Alex.
So we, they received funding for another round of the home repair loan program?
The housing stabilization program was a one-time.
Yeah.
So that will not be repeated.
Need anything else to mention? Anyone from the audience share a comment?
I think you can close the hearing.
We'll close the hearing at 7:15. Is that everything you need, Chip?
Yes.
Ladies, thank you for joining us. Appreciate it. Have a good evening. Choose to sign all your? You're welcome. All right, let's move on to consider an appointment for the Development Review Board. It's two, two terms expiring. One is a full member and one's an alternate. A full member being Tanner McKeown, alternate being Denis Lapointe.
Yep. Denis Lapointe is retiring from the DRB after he served for a while as a full member. Then he dropped himself down to an alternate, and he's on to other things. And we thank him for his service. He was a, he was a good member, very detail-oriented, and brought a sharp eye to the proceedings. Tanner McKeown, also a great member. He's been contributing a lot, and his term is up, but he is requesting reappointment. So he's an incumbent. He's our only candidate at this time. We didn't have any new candidates scheduled for city council chats for the year just yet, although I would like to do some more recruiting over the next few months.
Move to reappoint Tanner McKeown to the ERB. Motion to reappoint Tanner McKeown, second.
Second.
Second by Murray. So Chip, you're talking about recruiting others, but you don't have vacancies until 2023?
Well, we could recruit for that alternacy.
Oh, the alternacy.
And actually, there is another member who might be leaving the area. So there's another seat that might be opening up.
See, I know there's one member on here that has sold their house.
Yeah.
And it's going down.
Right, that's Matt.
Yep.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion, a second, all in favor of approving Tanner's to continue and log on to the Development Review Board. Say aye.
Aye.
Any other votes? Hearing none, motion passes, and Tanner's appointed to that position.
Thank you.
We'll go to item 3B.
Good job.
Ashley, do you want to join us for item number seven? Consider approval of loan agreement for Aldis Hill Tank.
Contrary to what Denise says, you can be trained.
Ashley, thanks for joining.
Hello. So I believe in July, you guys had the bond bank. We've been working with them to get the loan approved. They get approved with Aldis Hill Tank. So I just need approval from you guys to be able to sign it and send it back to them for that agreement.
Okay, approve the loan agreement for the Aldis Water Tank.
Second.
And?
Any, any questions for Ashley?
If we don't approve the loan, we have to pay catch, right?
Only question ever.
Point first back, what's the issue right on that again?
That one, I don't know off the top of my head.
That's fine.
Sure, we're back in here.
Yeah, it's fairly, okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve the, the funding for the Aldis Hill Water Tank. Although the FSA.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Funding approved. Can I ask one question that was presented to me? And I don't, it was regarding the tank. So I think we voted on it at some meeting today. We don't?
Not the most recent one, I think.
No. And there was an allocation of a certain amount, right? Let's say it was $2 million.
Yeah.
The question that was posed to me was, at that meeting, the cost went up. What are the logistics on that relative to the public voted on a amount? How does that, was there, is there sort of a leeway that is allowed?
No, you can't go over your voter authorized amount, but you can adjust other aspects of the package. And that's what some of this work has been doing, to change the amount that was in a grant versus the amount that was in a loan. And it's, you know, bringing some additional funding sources.
But any time there's a bond vote, do you have to maintain that level of public?
You can't, you can't borrow more money through the bond vote. You got to make it up to those.
Yes, okay.
I don't know if it was this one or the wastewater plant where there was some money that we were expecting was going to be forgiven. So as soon as that gets paid. All the SRF programs are typically a combination of grant, loan, forgiveness. But they like to have the total amount be on record. Marty, anything you would add?
I think it was worded borrowing up to a certain amount, and then we were going to be able to, there was some loan forgiveness, and there was some other money coming out with the infrastructure bill that was hopefully going to be able to be able to.
Good explanation. Thank you. Ashley?
It's varied in the exhibits, but it's a zero percentage for slow. Yeah. It wasn't just low, it's totally subsistent. It's kind of varied in the exhibits, but that's awesome.
All right, yeah. All right, so signatures are just the mayor, the clerk, and treasurer to this, right?
I do need covering the bodies.
You've got a document for Aldis?
Yes.
All right. Kevin, you will circle it over.
Both see Andy?
We did?
Okay.
We both have already. Yeah, me and Chad.
Let's go to number nine, Ashley, or excuse me, eight, tax anticipation note.
So this city is looking to have an approval with the bank from you guys for a tax anticipation note up to $2 million that can be borrowed between tax payments, especially when we have our bond payments that are made to give us that leeway time in between.
That's all different than its battery?
No, but we don't have anything in writing for the bank to be able to do this. So I'd like to have it approved by the Director of Admin in the meantime, the Business Manager myself, to be able to get these, get this note out if we need it in the meantime, and for all future fiscal years.
Motion to approve the tax anticipation note.
We do this every year, right?
Yes. Yes.
Sometimes it's a little less, and there's just a little more depending on the capital projects. And so.
Motion by Tanner, second by Chad, to approve the anticipation note, tax anticipation.
And including the man that said it's at $2 million?
I have $2 million. $2 million levels? All votes in there, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Hearing none, then the tax anticipation note has been approved. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
All right, move on to number nine. Consider approval of revised change for Parks and Recreation Commission.
No. Couple months, a couple, many months ago, we combined Parks and Recreation Commission. Analyzing documents, I think we just combined the name Parks and Recreation, but we didn't amend the charge. And so the commission was asking that the charge be amended to reflect the direction. So we have done so in the proposed document for you.
Any questions for Donald on this?
We don't have discussion involved here.
Aren't we supposed to discuss anything?
Yeah, we need a motion to that, but.
I move that we accept the revised charge for the Parks and Recreation Committee. Mission, sorry.
Second.
Motion second on the charge. Any questions for Donald?
Did they review this, or are they okay with this?
They sent in a letter of request, and we captured their sentiments in this.
Any questions for Donald on this? Any straightforward? All votes in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any want to vote? Hearing none, the charge passes. Thank you, Donald. I did, number 10, FY '23 budget calendar, because I'm a calendar.
Yeah, this was a presentation.
So we didn't have any?
Sure, we have a good presentation now.
Well, let me just double check if it's in. Yes, you can begin the presentation.
So it's now budget season. And the staff plan is to follow what we've done in the past years, where we meet with the Finance Committee the first week of January, and then submit the draft budget to the full council at the first regularly scheduled council meeting in January, which will be on the ninth. And then typically from that point, we'll have a sense of sort of what the trajectory is, whether you want to continue to work on it in the subsequent Mondays, or whether we think we'll maybe close, and we can come to an agreement within another meeting or two. So, you know, but at this point, I would hold you Mondays in January. And hopefully, Finance Committee's help will, will be close on the ninth, and maybe we can do an additional meeting. We just have to see, see where we're at. You know, it's anticipated to be a tight budget with some of the inflationary pressure and some of the other obligations that got under going. We've got Mike, Bob, and Tim on that, right, you guys? Yeah. The staff.
And what's the deadline for them to tell me?
Next, the end of the month. So typically, we do it, typically, we present on the first Monday, review again on the second Monday, or the third Monday, then the one. And then that following week, we schedule a conference call to adopt the warning based on where, where things are at. Now that, I'm hedging a little bit. We're, Tom's positioned and transitioned, as you know. So we're going to be able to get a year-to-date financials assembled. Department heads requests are in. But we haven't yet had an in-depth review by the manager's office to see what it's going to take. So if the public wanted to have input, the best time to do that, would that be during committee meeting? Or would that be during our, when we review it at the next city council? At the January City Council meeting? The January City Council meeting is the best opportunity for public input. Okay.
That's the ninth.
The ninth, yeah. I know in the past, we've gone on Saturdays and on different days of the week, and we just never have. Never, you know, and yeah, I mean, people expect us to do business on Monday nights. So. We tried to do donuts once, and that's still. Kind of blew the budget thing.
Well, we have angry, we'll have angry.
You're right.
I'll give me my question here. You're down.
I'm on my way back Friday night, but I leave down there at four. I never know.
How about that fifth week, if you're running that first week? Nineteen and start?
Good ring.
Any other questions on that?
Why is, why was there DUB?
That's probably the typo, the sugar.
All right. Anything else on that, Donald? No? Item number 11, minutes report. Marty, a couple, one thing is the pedestrian crosswalk button in front of our building, American House, doesn't work.
Going from north-south over lake?
Yes, we're going from American House over to Royal City. It doesn't, doesn't push in.
It frozen?
No, it's done. Just a couple acknowledgements. Thank you to all the volunteers who put together Festival of Trees. All the, all the work to light the park in downtown. Once again, nothing but compliments relative to that. Tractor parade, huge crowd downtown for those who, who are able to make it. If I had one comment, it might be that, I don't know, reasonable amount, but police presence might need to go up higher in the neighborhoods because the, at least in Congress Messenger, they're just a traffic jam. Because everyone parked on the west side of Messenger, and then the cars were detoured up from Main Street, and they all went. So Messenger ended up being a one-way street. And people came down Congress thinking they were going to turn on the Messenger, and they got down there, and there was no place to go.
I turned on, and then cars behind me, and there was a line of traffic, and I couldn't go forward because everyone, but you couldn't even see the end of the line. So I actually walked down the street and stopped traffic because we were fucking at a cool intersection.
I heard about that.
Yeah, little white car.
Yeah.
Sorry, maybe some of the.
That would certainly help the investigation.
I will, I will have my plow truck next time.
So maybe just some consideration of what the impacts are in the neighborhoods along the district for me.
That's the advantage, live on Bear Street, you get to walk right down.
It would have been nice if Messenger was one way and I was the other way.
Right, yeah. So. And thank you to the co-op and the FIA for putting that together. They had the most, I spoke to Leon birthday today, and they had the most entries they've had to date, 63. It attracts many people. The restaurants are busy, and most of the coffee shops are open. Sour couples.
They stayed openly and offered hot chocolate.
So. Lot of activity, so kudos for, once again, all those community activities. I was standing with a councilperson from the town or city of South Burlington, and he was questioning me as to why South Burlington can't do the stuff that we do here as to the pool, the community events and whatnot. And I said they need to put a mayor position.
It would be interesting to see a line of tractor going down Silver Road. I think they're going to do an SUV parade.
To that point, the next night, the Jeep parade was there. It was going all around that. So a lot going on during the holiday season, and thank you to all the volunteers. So Tim will go first.
Not much to say, a couple things on not my ward. Where are we at the courthouse?
The biggest delay in the courthouse is non-permiss. It's not a dynamo. It's not lighting. It's an electrical panel.
Backwater.
Backwater, and trying to spray them once.
Holy smokes. How big is it?
I've got one.
Yeah, I got a warehouse full, so.
Seriously?
I mean, it might not be the right one, but.
All right, that's good enough.
Looks like we're.
Yeah.
Positive note, I was really happy with the article about bootleggers. Positive note, I was really happy with the article about bootleggers growing their business, thinking out of, actually not thinking out of the box, but they're right there, but doing the snowboarding and the skis and.
Skate sharpening.
Skate sharpening, that was something that the city needed, I don't know if we knew we needed it, but we really did need it, so.
For what it's worth, we lent them the money to buy the machine, so. That's it. Mike?
Just to reinforce what you said about how beautiful the city looks at night, with the old decorations all through the park, and I want to thank Marty because I had an issue, not an issue, but a question from a teacher at Tom's school who was walking across the internet, you know, interstate access road and was questioning the safety of it. Turns out it's in the town, but Marty addressed it very successfully with that, and I appreciate that, and appreciative of that.
Things seem to be good and worked for, they're doing a lot of shopping downtown, so, you know, holiday raffles on, so, yeah, it's really, it's really fantastic to be in Aspro Fly as an elephant page, and just there's, it seems like things are still really busy on the weekend even when it's cold. I was commenting to Marty earlier that with the first real snow, it seemed like the trucks were out, the roads got cleared, had a couple of people comment that the response was great, so thanks for keeping the road safe.
Thank you.
Did the sidewalk brush it go out, Marty?
Yeah. Even got some leaves off Bank Street.
Why you put your leaves in the sidewalk?
Just got one neighbor who's got a particular spot that doesn't get them.
Anything else, Mike?
That's it.
Chad?
Just a couple quick things, thank you, Marty, for being responsive with the graffiti. I was really bummed that we got tagged so late in the season, it seemed, usually that stuff ends late summer, so it was a bummer, but thanks for being responsive. Were you ever able to get in touch with the railroad about cleaning up the side of their building?
I sent them an email, not just my voicemail.
Okay. And then I see that the, saying old Messenger, the north side of it's getting fixed, repaired, so that's kind of nice to see that happening. I was really concerned this fall, when I saw that it was all collapsing. I don't know if it'll all get fixed, but at least a big chunk of it got fixed. And then the only other thing I got, the woods building seems to be piling up the tires again, is there any reason why they hoard them until?
No, they had a.
They've got a condition.
It's empty, it was empty this morning.
Okay, it was last week.
I looked, and I said, wow, they got a lot of them.
Is there any reason they just keep them, or they just keep?
I think they keep them as long until they have a load or whatever, but they have a condition on their permit that they have to get rid of it when it comes over the walls.
Okay. Because I did see a week ago or so, just starting to.
I'm pretty sure, Chad, I went by this morning, it was empty.
Pretty empty.
And this would be the season weather, huh?
Yeah, yeah, all right. That was it, thank you. DLC looks beautiful, very happy, everything seems to be quiet besides the graffiti, so.
Ward three is also quiet, things seem to be moving right along since the Aqua Blossom parking lot, must have been a big difference with that corner, so I think that maybe we've gotten that somewhat taken care of. A question about the building that used to be an old storefront, just past Holy Angels.
Black Creek.
Yeah, it's a real, I saw it down there, and is there any, any activity with that place, or I don't even know if it's an apartment upstairs, or, but there is, but it's kind of detracting to that area.
The one with the plywood?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it just looks like a boarded-up building.
Used to be miners.
Nope, no, Black Creek Market.
Used to be Black Creek Market.
Shays Hall was here, so, yeah.
I think they turned it in, that spot got turned into residential.
It did.
But they never did anything with the texture on that side.
Marty, I think those who knew what the convenience store was tried to buy beer there many a times.
That's why.
That's why I think town.
I used to go to Lester's. I would've been about twelve.
I did try, I did.
So I saw a lead that, Marty, I totally agree with you, is that, is that Rick's building? I have to find out the, I think, I think it is.
No.
I wouldn't do that, I wouldn't have passed away about.
There was Chuck Masert, he used on that.
And he passed away, right?
Yep, and then he sold it, and that person was going to fix it up, and never did it.
I thought it was the same individual that owns the one next door to me.
Next door to you?
Yeah, he owned both of them.
Your house?
Yeah, one arugula and this one.
Yeah, you may be right, Tim, you may be right, agent?
Yeah.
So, you know, the interesting to think about, who's the most active entity right down on Lake Street? Spectrum, right? So, isn't it pretty close to Spectrum?
No, it's a courtyard down the road. No, it's a courtyard. Senior years, maybe.
Past Holy Angels housing.
Yeah, yeah.
About a block.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know.
Blocker, two blocks.
Trying to find somebody, you know, and let's get the idea right, you know, and then figure out who is a good partner that we can help.
Yeah, because it's too bad, you know, there's been so much money invested in the city, and, 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 you know, you, I don't know, you sit down through there, and it's kind of sad to see that place like that.
It wouldn't take much, Marty.
No.
What, what about the, the Aqua money we're using for fixing up sites, where they fifty-fifty? Is that a discussion that would be?
Possibly, I mean, we, there's any number of funding sources for it, you know, I think the idea is, you know, is challenged with the vision, right, what's the right picture? And, you know, does the market work, right, there's some of the transition with hospital business and that thing, and, you know, what's, what's that, what's that neighborhood need? You know, what's the ambition we should blow on?
Not a lot of parking, that's the issue, I said over six.
Yeah, but, I mean, that's, historically, it was a neighborhood market. Yeah, and everybody walked, so, unless something that people need that, well.
Do you, you want to set up a meeting with the owner, with you and Marty?
Could be, sure.
And Chip?
Thank you. And then I just, I'm taking over for Chad here tonight.
You're going to show the end of the line.
Just a couple little things, I noticed the park is gorgeous, and, but I did notice that on some of these streetlights that are in the park, there's several of them that seem to be out, you know, I mean, I wouldn't say fix them now, because with the lights, it's.
Actually, our third ship guys are ordering carts for them, so.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. And then, geez, Tim, not to take over for you, but that traffic light on Newton, oh my God, coming down, it doesn't work, and I sat there for fifteen minutes while Dana finally went through a red light, because, you know.
We have that on those curbs.
Four cycles of cars went north while I was sitting there, so I'm like, I'm going.
Is that the one on Main Street?
Yeah.
Main Newton. It's intermittent at best.
I think actually if you stay a little farther up the hill.
The Lord, you don't sense at all.
Yep.
No. So we can maybe look at that again, you know.
I gave up.
I know. Anyway, that's all I have.
Till we replace two fifty-nine.
You'll?
All quiet.
All good?
Set that fire we had, and I want to give a compliment to the fire department, they did a good job. We're just lucky the wind wasn't in the north, we might have had an explosion, proflating cars out there. So, that's it on that.
We, in your area, the one-way street discussion, is that not moved anywhere?
We haven't talked about this yet, but saw that the city's email service went down, and, you know, the background of that is where we're the national server outfit called Rackspace, Rackspace was a victim of a ransomware attack, and so, you know, we lost four days of email, and then we had an additional half a week, basically, of dealing with that crisis and trying, you know, not being able to use your email, so it slowed everything down, so that's one of the questions.
Just, so, we were, FSE was impacted by the, regional planning was impacted by the.
Rackspace? We probably have the same, it's all.
Right, so we, Tom, it was all on the same one, and they were all, so.
Are you up and running?
I mean, we are, we circumvented the system.
You're up three sixty-five.
But the problem is you don't have access to any of their addresses, so you have to always, you have to sort of go back and look about, you can't just pull it up, so the time consumption is huge.
It's unbelievable, and that new workaround is the calmest I've seen.
I'm not sure, is Tom here tonight?
Tom, or has came and left, all right?
Oh, he did. Yeah, you see, they're preparing to transition us to, back to our desktop client and have all the emails that were stored on our computers, accessible to us. I guess Rackspace will take control of this, huh?
My own Rackspace has gone out of business, I think it's gross evidence, and I hope that somebody, you know, they, you have, you know, those of us in, you know, the industries that were, and you can lose it, and you can, you know, but that could somebody's, some of the financial impact of some businesses, you have to, I think there's going to be lawsuits that.
If you went to their webpage, they had a narrative about what they were doing, and I thought it was interesting, they said, we brought in a national expert to help us resolve, I was thinking, why do you bring a national expert in to prevent?
I felt like there's customer service, their explanations has been woefully lacking. I told our consultants, you know, under no circumstances will we ever do business with Rackspace again, figured we got to figure something else out, figuring, this is ridiculous.
Anything else with the? Yeah, we've got to get going. No other business for anyone? None, okay, moving on to. Mr. Mayor, do you want to talk about the board candidates? Oh, yes, thank you, Chip. So Chip's sent on another email, so it looks like the number of interviews has dropped off significantly. Yeah, there are some folks who just still haven't turned in applications, so I think maybe we'll catch them next time, if there's an opening. So you want to, everyone saw the email from Chip today? Okay, so one. I figure if we set a noon time and an evening time, and we tell the candidates that, when could you come in to speak with some council members in one of those two times, we could probably do it all. So Sharon wants to join in? Is there any movement on that? They very candid?
I'm going to do so, no, not with that perspective fire.
Yeah, so let's follow up on that, Chip, and going that strategy, an evening and a noon? We just need consistent people interviewing for whatever board it is. So, a few people had said they were available, first time we've sent it out, so if people can respond to that this week, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay. Consider.
Motion to approve meeting minutes twelve, eleven fourteen twenty-two.
Second by Chad, all those in favor, say aye.
I just, really quickly, I have a small correction at the top of page three, is my comments, I think the word community should be the word committee, the BI committee.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve minutes with one correction, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Minutes approved, moving on.
Approve warrants, eleven thirty.
So we have a motion from Chad, second by Chad, approve the one of eleven thirty. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Warrant approved, and then motion to adjourn. Second by Murray, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, have a happy holiday.